Watch me crank it, watch me roll. Crank that Soulja Boy, it's Superman at home. Crank that Soulja Boy. Crank that Soulja Boy. Crank that Soulja Boy. Crank that Soulja Boy. Soulja Boy up in this hole. Watch me crank it, watch me roll. Watch me crank that Soulja Boy. The Superman at home. Ooh, crank that Soulja Boy. Crank that Soulja Boy. Ooh, crank that Soulja Boy. Soulja Boy up in this hole. Watch me lean and watch me rock. Superman at home. Oh, watch me crank that bubble pop. Super fresh now, watch me chop. Choking on them haters fame. When I do that Soulja Boy. I lean to the left, I crank that thing. Soulja Boy up in this hole. Watch me lean and watch me rock. Watch me crank that Soulja Boy. The Superman at home. Ooh, crank that Soulja Boy. Ooh, crank that Soulja Boy. I'm choking on your bitches. And if we get to fighting. Then I'm cocking on your bitches. You catch me at your local party. Yes, I crank it everyday. Haters getting mad 'cause. I got me some baby napping mates. I'm bouncing on my toe. Watch me super soak that whore. I'm gonna blast it to everywhere. Then he's gonna pack it up for sure. Haters wanna be neat. Soulja Boy. I'm the man, baby looking at my neck. Saying it's the rubber band, man, man, man. Soulja Boy up in this hole. Watch me crank it, watch me roll. Watch me crank that Soulja Boy. It's Superman at home. Yo, crank that Soulja Boy. Yo. Yo, crank that Soulja Boy. Yo. Crank that Soulja Boy. Watch me do it, watch me do it. Dance, dance, let it to it, let it to it. No, you can't do it like me. Yo, so don't do like me. Fuck, I see you trying to do it like me. Man, that shit was ugly. No, you can't do like me. Yo, so don't do like me. Fuck, I see you trying to do it like me. Man, that shit was ugly. Soulja Boy up in this hole. Watch me crank it, watch me roll. Watch me crank that Soulja Boy. It's Superman at home. Crank that Soulja Boy. Yo. Crank that Soulja Boy. Yo. Crank that Soulja Boy. Yo. Crank that Soulja Boy. Crank that Soulja Boy. Crank that Soulja Boy.
You don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. That'll represent like me. Who say some shit like me. One fool ain't a dick like me. You don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. Who do the shit that I do. Front do your whole lil crew. Trick pay point if I got to. You don't know, then they go. Gotta run off in your house. Put the gun up in your mouth. Call your motherfucking brains out. Oh, you don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. Bitch, you don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. Bitch, you don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. Oh, you don't know, then they go. Bitch, you don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. Woo. Uh-uh. You don't know, then they go. I would fall off in the club. Free drinks for to show some love. Take the bar, bone for the thugs. You don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. Who no more niggas than me. Who do more killings than me. Way more dope killers than me. You don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. That trash pressure than me. And you don't know, then they go. That wear more porno shit than me. Bitch, you don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. You don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. Oh, you don't know. Then they go. Uh-uh. Bitch, you don't know, then they go. Bitch, you don't know, then they go. Uh-uh. Then they go. Uh-uh.
Don't know, then who. Danced in the places out there. Who can spend the grand that I spent. Four, five, six best friends. And you don't know, then. Oh, oh, that's chain like me. That I've lost the pain like me. On a awful pain like me. Yeah, you don't know. Oh, oh, that's all chain like me. That I've lost the pain like me. On a awful pain like me.
Oh, you don't know, then they go. Bitch, you don't know, then they go. Oh, you don't know. Bitch, she don't know, then they go. You don't know, then they go. My bad bitch, you don't know. Then they go. Oh, oh, you don't know. Then they go.
My bitch is bad and bougie. Been cooking a dope with a boozy. My niggas is savage, fool play spoo. We got thirties and hundred rounds to do. Oh shit, whoa, 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 whoa. Wreckings on wreckings, got blackings on blackings. I'm riding around in a coupe. I take your bitch right from you. Bitch, I'm a dog. Beat that whole walls. Hop in the frog. I tell that bitch, don't come for me. Come for me. Ooh. Rain drop, drop, drop top, drop top. Smoking on cookie in the hot box. Fucking on your bitch, she a thot, thot. Cooking that dope in the crack pot. Ooh. I swear these niggas is under me. They hating the devil, keep chomping me. Chomping me, bankroll's on me, keep me company. Ay, we do the most. Pull up in ghost. Yeah. My diamonds a joke. Holding the fire with no host to rig the ruler. Diamonds cool. Mmm, we came from nothing to something. I don't trust nobody. Grip the trigger, who call up the gang? And they come and get you. Cry me a river, give you a tissue. Oh. It's a rolling, not a Mueller. Tapping on them like the usual. Magic with the break the voodoo. Court side with a bad bitch. Mmm. My bitch is bad and bougie. Been cooking a dope with a boozy. Woo. My niggas is savage, fool play spoo. We got thirties and hundred rounds to do. And I send the bitch through Uber. I'm young and rich and plus I'm bougie. I'm not snoopy, so I keep the boozy. Wreckings on wreckings, got blackings on blackings. Show my money, making my bank. You niggas got a low act rate. We from the north, get away. Fat cookie blood in the ashtray. Two bitches just national smash day. Hop in the lamb, have a drag race. I let them birds take a buffet. Ooh. Rain drop, drop, drop top, drop top. Smoking on cookie in the hot box. Fucking on your bitch, she a thot, thot. Cooking that dope in the crack pot. Ooh. Phone phone dropping mine, how the space keep cutting. Introduce me to your bitch ass wife. And we know she slut. Broke a brick down, nutty bunny, now that nigga ducking. Ooh. Don't move too fast, I might shoot you. Drake go bad and bougie. I'm always hanging with shooters. Might be supposed to somewhere secluded. Climbing. My bitch is bad and bougie. Been cooking a dope with a boozy. Woo. My niggas is savage, fool play spoo. We got thirties and hundred rounds to do. Still be playing with pots and pans. Call me Quavo attitude. Run with that sack, call me booby. When I'm on stage, show me boobies. Ice on my neck, I'm the coolest. Ooh. Still be playing with pots and pans. Call me Quavo attitude. Run with that sack, call me booby. When I'm on stage, show me boobies. Ice on my neck, I'm the coolest. Ooh. Yeah, that's that way. Float on the track like a segue. Yeah, that, that way. I used to trap on the subway. Yeah, that way. Young nigga traveled a decade. That way, big guy hogging it on my seat back. My bitch is bad and bougie. Been cooking a dope with a boozy. Woo. My niggas is savage, fool play spoo. We got thirties and hundred rounds to do. Rain drop, drop, drop top, drop top. Smoking on cookie in the hot box. Fucking on your bitch, she a thot, thot. Cooking that dope in the crack pot. Ooh. We came from nothing to something. I don't trust nobody, grip the trigger. Ooh. Call up the gang and they come and get you. Cry me a river, give you a tissue. Ooh. Got next up. Got next up. Ooh. Got next up. Got next up. You know, young rich niggas. You know, so we never really had no old money. We got a whole lot of new money though.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning.
I don't care how long it take to get an op back. All my niggas outside state, bitch, we outback.
This morning, I had a proud dad moment. Only for it to be followed up with total disappointment. So that the proud dad moment was, is she, um... She been wearing different shoes out this week. Cause I ain't want her to wear her Jordans. Cause she wore them last week on the first day. So I was switching up her shoes. And we got to day five. And I was like, you wanna wear your hot pink chucks? And she was like, nah, I wanna wear the Jordans. And I was like, ah, proud dad moment. Cause Monday, what she wore? Monday, she wore the foam posits. Tuesday, she wore her light pink high top chucks. It was raining winds, so she wore her navy blue and white hoops. And then yesterday, she wore the white and pink K Swiss. And so today, I was gonna do the chucks. And she was like, nah, I want the Jordans. So it was a proud dad moment. But the sad part is, they wouldn't let me walk her into school this morning. They gonna stop me like I'm a stranger or something. Wait a minute, this ain't, this is... Do they not care about how this is a shock to the parents? Now she done just ripped away me walking my baby into school. We be talking. Good morning, everybody. Tiffany went off last night though, from the clips that I see. She, she went the fuck off. She, uh... She mad they wasn't paying them bills. From what I understand, they said Stan Brown quit their lawn care service job again. This is second time quitting. And yeah, she mad about bills not being paid. She, she was going off. She didn't have her stylish wig she had on her, uh, hat. Her bed wig, and so... There's gonna be, some of these parts is low. I only got, we only got one angle of this thing. So it's, it's no better audio. She had to work through it. Without further ado. Jordan Township. Special board meeting. This wasn't even scheduled. It was a special board meeting. And there was another reason she was ticked off. She was like, we got a meeting next week. Why y'all doing this? There you go.
Next, we have, uh, agenda meeting. Uh, crossfire. Uh, thank you for coming out. Uh, media, I see that you're over here. And I say this my part, and you are up here at this...
First of all, I just wanna say, the audience rude is a motherfucker. Uh, when, when the meeting going on, y'all supposed to shut the fuck up. So people could hear. Y'all is rude and just still talking. Damn, I hear the background noise and not her. Y'all rude.
We have, we have, we have Big Bingo. Uh, Thomas team is in the building. I think you guys should take your cameras downstairs. And ask them to talk to Brooklyn and really tell you.
Oh shit, was Big Bingo last night? That's why they, that's why she's, she, she mad. They had the special board meeting on Big Bingo night. Cause they knew she was gonna be in the building. It would've looked bad for her to been down there at Big Bingo. And not the special board meeting with the news in there. She want the news to go downstairs and cover it.
I think I say this, uh, we have Big Bingo. Uh, Thomas team is in the building. I think you guys should take your cameras downstairs. And ask them to talk to Brooklyn and really tell you. I have a stative dysfunction. I have a true, that's all my body. They go, you turn around, she go, you call for a cut. And I really, what, they toast the group. Uh, just great to, uh, ask you. And that attention, that's my... Um, next on agenda, we got two of us suspended. Is that emotional, please?
I was saying, is that rude or not? All that goddamn noise while she talking. Did y'all come to the... I don't get it. I, I, I don't get it. They came to have their own personal conversations, I guess. They ain't gonna pay any attention to what she said. Maybe they get quiet when she get to the agenda items.
Uh, gentlemen. Welcome to, uh, the shit motion. Page zero, two, eight, five, and nine. I want you to have a, every day. Uh, exclude that from the... Alright, move to the second. I'm sorry, exclude or include? In most of any moments. Hey, and Ryan, and Ryan, we're getting more of them.
Kate designed something, but I repeat. The people in the audience are rude as fuck. There is no way it should be audience goddamn talking on. If they came to watch the fucking board meeting and pay attention to what's going on.
Alright, um, any discussion? Alright, have plenty of discussions. We just gotta get a ton of conversation. Uh, basically, I don't understand. We're doing things from the office. I think you should pay everybody. Is it pre-arranged or...
You say, this click, baby.
What was the point? Uh, we were supposed to start with something.
Wait a minute, most of the noise were coming from... So they were the senior citizens, old ass, shuffling their ass in there to play bingo. So wait a minute, there ain't any doors to shut this noise and stuff out? They just... Oh, it's, so it just... Well, I think that was bad timing by whoever called the special meeting at this time. Cause again, it's, it's so much damn background noise going on. You can't hear the business. Bad trustees. Y'all should've picked a different time. I, I get it, cause her ass was gonna be in the building to promote for her Big Bingo. So y'all got her in the building where it would look weird if there was a special meeting upstairs. And she was downstairs. But damn, she went, why, why? Damn, did she have y'all faces up? That y'all couldn't get in? This is... She, she ain't going. She said, fuck, she going out with a thing.
That's what's going to drive you down. It's fine as far as... Was, you said, whatever you want. So, we, we didn't refer to her, so I said, whatever you want. We're gonna have to say that. So, we wanted to really go up. Just to bring our people for the gang. We didn't just ask for that. And here she feels, um, trying to, uh, hold up. With every bill, uh, right, rushes from the commission. Which I, which I don't know. You know, something, sorry, actually, I forgot. I wish I could, uh, to, uh, to... I don't know, yeah, because I'm pretty beautiful. Only that, I was, I was able to have any work. To have family. I don't know, that way, I'm sorry.
Somebody should've went in the hallway and said, shut the fuck up. We can't hear. I know this is terrible right there. I hope it get better. But this is terrible right now. They don't give a fuck about what's going on in here. Big Keith's in over there. You got Keith. Shoot, fuck, y'all. Keith, can you tell the people in the hall to shut the fuck up? Keith, you walk right past all that ruckus. You ain't say nothing. What good are you for? What, 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 what? What do you, what role do you play? Can you, can't, can you get the crowd class? Ain't gonna clear it out or something? Tiffany, say they had an order. Say something. I'm so...
Their, uh, smarts, their ritz. And you know, they're, they're, so we got all these things.
I can't believe it ain't no closed off space to where the noise wouldn't be coming in like then. If it was some closed doors, that would make a hell, that would make all the difference in the world. It sound like them people that's outside in the hallway are inside the room. God, you look at this shit, goddamn.
Trustee Dallas. Trustee John. Trustee Karla. Supervisor Amy. Motion pass. Alright, next on agenda, is that a motion, like a general conference?
She's taking, how many security was at the door? Cause if it were about forty of y'all and two security, y'all should've been able to bum rush them niggas. They weren't gonna take all y'all to jail. One man, say, power to the people. Next time this situation happen and it's forty of y'all. Or even twenty of y'all and one security guard. All y'all just walk forward at one time. He can't hold his outstretched arms and stop twenty or thirty of y'all from walking forward. Yeah, you just gotta, y'all, sometimes you just got to stand up. Just power those.
Alright, so, here we go. Can you, can you discuss?
Carmen, listen.
Y'all get over a month to talk about every single thing up here. Uh, I have to say that you get a good, it's a car. So, you gotta find your job, which is to check it out. And make sure that everything that you want to say. So how we only paying some things, but we got important deals that need to be paid. No matter what, we gotta know that. Cause now you run out, we should just not have done the list. So, can you, you know, leave all the things for people that have... Are waiting for months. Y'all probably special week, y'all have this on that.
Yeah, well, uh, naked, well, we shout to us. We're a special meeting to pay certain deals. Uh, we still haven't seen the, with the tax, your cards, the last fee. Um, and we remember that we paid insurance, we carry my, we, we had insurance lapse. We know that pantry, you know, we didn't pay, like, things in our system. So we, we wanted to make sure we're only... I don't see, you see, they, people's orders asked, and then we can provide the poison. So we needed to, just make more...
Yeah, Carmen speaking, talking about, we need him.
Their free, their, their, they, they want some people to...
So, that's all possible.
Tell them that the question, that I'll back right now.
You have, you have so many needs, uh, that we, we, we concerned about paying. Trump's trustee. You would've paid it for that people. You got set here, trust your time, trust secrets. You both sat here, they paid no box. Now, still so, how y'all in special meeting going for that? Number two, y'all didn't wanna pay this, y'all working for that too. So, those so urgent, how it been today? And we couldn't take care of this all. For all these lives, our families, so y'all cared about that. You already got paid each and every single one. When you're here, try to pay them. From G A to some of the general fathers on...
Cause, cause it's from a nigga that's considered an op. And I ain't trying to, to fight no strikes and shit. And in seeing it, ain't gonna make it better. The audio still fucked up, cause the people in the hallway being loud as hell.
And myself, and Trustee, are the only two that agree to pay. So now, how are you guys getting it? You ain't getting it, you're not getting it, y'all are. You ain't getting it, you're not getting it, y'all all, well, really, I don't, you gotta look at that, and y'all broke up. Um, from my understanding, this is very close, so I think I'll reach out, I'll see y'all, go also in.
Who playing with that key?
And I asked him, yeah, well, be home, while he's on the street, what have you been? Y'all ready, I'm ready, I'm excited, you still got the staff, and this is, what's that? They did the work, just like y'all get paid, right? Cause y'all, that y'all coming up, y'all, you know, you gotta send your check, like, oh, right? So, my brothers, you can accept.
You said, you took your check.
I think that's a very important deal, so, so y'all, in that, like, statues, those are, see, on any other deal. And then, you know, narrative was looking like this, I know that, so that's showing you guys, picking into the, for you.
I'm motion, uh, keep the bills on the, uh, for your, for your, for your.
All right. It will come back, like, so, so, this is on all of them, you got it, it's a hero, I did have to be heroes, uh, last, uh, for me, and I can have a, uh, application, so, um, I'm willing to make a, to never lose this.
One thing interesting, you have very opportunity to stay where you're at, you have made, um, several meetings, right? And then short to one, you know, fifteen or twenty minutes, which only one, so all this, so, so, probably is, uh, right. So, please, um, you saying this up here, right, that, I mean, let me ask you, this is how, maybe, so we lost some information to kindly, then you talk. So, keep your presence, so, uh, uh, but I need you guys to sound more clear, I need you guys, actually, I need you guys to sound more, naturally, I really need you guys.
It's hard, it's, it's hard enough to hear without it.
If you didn't hear something back from a person, what a personal, people call and say, hey, I don't know if it's all the email, it could have been at the office, but I'm calling just to follow up. I still didn't get what I needed to get in the house, I couldn't set an appointment, can I come and get what's needed? Things like that. But if we just go get him, say, well, you didn't ask my email, so I didn't pay everybody. I didn't come to nobody. Come on, man, it gotta make sense, you gotta do better, guys. It can't be tick for cat, it has to be, I'm coming to do what's right. I ain't coming to make sure staff can pay, I ain't coming to make sure the vendors can take care of the seniors, the youth and family, the transportation, all these things are missed, because all of us have been here and they all gonna talk to y'all and tell y'all, y'all is hurting their operations. Y'all are really hurting the operation, operation must keep going. And it's like y'all wanna just tear down the government here and the attention, and that's not right. Because you kind of made a way for you to want to run, because there's a lot more going on since I came. It's been really busy, the numbers are all up, they're telling y'all this and that and this, but y'all ain't know what it be like. I'm everywhere, y'all never done that. And that's the case, Pop, myself, Tommy, she the only one, she the only one for every single thing, for how she not in. And we have a goal, and a horse to show up. Y'all won't win, just like now, say, if y'all didn't sign here, why y'all come down here? Why? You in the same building as the rest, the seniors, but y'all was not downstairs with me, make that. We don't have
Don't like bingo.
Of a mess that you hear on the TV, or we won't do what's right, it's short, opposite of what happened. That's what's at the bar, because y'all know that, and y'all not here. So this is your emotion. I like to go back, um, it's not about
You n***a bitches shit, goddamn.
I can see for myself that I did, hey, 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 hold on, hold on, y'all gotta cut that off, what am I gonna do?
What the hell is this?
Okay, you, you have to step out of the water, have your, have your, have your step outside. But right now, we have a non-professional meeting.
I wanna put it to record that Darren Gray entered meeting at six twenty-nine. Sorry, trustee Darren Gray.
Um, Craig, go ahead.
Trustee Kay, late in the morning.
We have, um, I have requested the information, so a lot of times, we see a lot of people, and there's no organization, there's no structure, and I've asked if there's gonna be a way to separate everything out one by department, so we can see exactly where the answers came from. And then I asked, we're not separating it out by credit cards, and then what needs to be paid? And you need to make it easier for it to identify what's been, what department it's in. How do you even ask for every department to make a monthly, um, weekly review, so we can identify the department on each, but again, we're trying to do things to make this easier process, or up your suit process, where we won't have more questions. And then too, probably even ask for there to be some kind of communication saying, hey, this is the manager coming up, we're gonna need more, then just communicate with the board, so we don't need here. We don't have a thousand questions, because we have actually communicated through email or whatever, text, some kind of, um, you know, conversation, go back and, you know, kind of just see what was said. But yeah, we ask for this information to be organized way, and you don't need it that way. It is very hard to understand, um, all the deals, and so sometimes we don't listen to them, or we don't give questions, and sometimes we don't give questions, I'll answer your questions, so it's not about today, it's about
I wish I could just pray.
We have information to be informed, and all is about, there are a lot more on the atmosphere, we have a we need to make sure that we are, uh, holding out, it's our job to take care of our and should all be
Tiffany wanted to bow to this, just go play big bingo.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to But at the end of the day, he was on the board whenever called on me, right? So you shouldn't have put in the same initiative in play when you weren't saying a word a year ago, so long ago. And when you go sue, uh, the administration league, they need everything that you put on their list, their warrant, that view, she'll make sure you pay it, because it's the need for their department. Everything that they ask for, if you are their department, or the residents. So if something that you think is wrong, or something that you see, whether it be your life, your point that happened, they give it two steps, which is keep your price, let him know what that is, and then we will give you the answer to whoever sent it, whatever it is, or just come here, exactly, I'm saying, no, we, so you know what, okay, these, these twenty people, and that's all, that's not right. When it's other bills that's really, really important, which rather have the best stuff, and you guys didn't even add it on the list. Come on, man, that's not right. And that's what I'm asking you guys. Are you gonna motion to pay all the bills?
You know, I don't know, say, I'm visiting, I'm visiting, I'm eating, I'm having a good time. But, you know, for a long time, I found that, yeah, I'm really trusting, I'm really into this process, I learned it, um, my brain's like that, but I will say that the reason I didn't ask questions, or I didn't, you know, put any question, you know, I trusted the administration, I trusted the
I saw, I saw that news clip there, she was saying, she trusted the administration, she didn't trust the administration no more.
And the moment I didn't trust the administration, I started asking for one of them, so that's why I said you were understanding things about the whole. And that's, and that's, and that's
Tiffany's not hard enough to hear.
The board didn't work, they didn't ask, they didn't ask, the report is not working, I have to ask questions, I have to make sure I understand what I'm saying, yes, and that's my job, maybe I was getting tired before, but now I'm working, I always want to go to better job, I can make sure I know, so that I can, that's why I, that's why I
Yeah, they got a back.
The process, you know, put in for the thing, the process, for the starting process that she was telling you, so get up to the I had to say, I didn't trust the process, so you won't have that, that's what I'm saying about your lives, come and stop.
Oh, she going there, come on.
And I'm not questioning, asking you, and you put things
Tiffany, her answer makes sense, she trusted the process until she didn't trust the process no more. So yeah, she was voting with you, trusting the process, believing that the stuff that was on there was legit, and was some actual shit that benefited the residents, not kickbacks, not shit for your personal stylist and wardrobe and all that shit. That, that's where she started to say, oh, I need to see what these PayPal purchases are, just say PayPal. Can we know what that is, who, who that go to? Can we, can we understand why this dude can cut the same tree out these times and things of that nature? That makes sense. You fucked it up. They had faith in the system, and then you ruined everybody's faith and trust and belief in that system.
And the board voted for you, right, the same thing you're doing now.
Oh, they, your last journal got a copy? All right.
Holding a progress, but you don't want to pay something, because everybody needs and the difference is on the governor's presence, it's because Keith Freeman out here is why you doing what you do. But before, you give everything on, that means like, oh, he said, okay, and then put that on. So now you're asking a question, um, nothing wrong, and it's nothing wrong, she got every single thing that's happening. Everything that's down here, um, is related to, you know, every single thing. So it's not going back to work, I told you, you can have our conversation, my line is a lot of people believe or remember that sitting here, but I do want to pay, uh, bills that is needed for, uh, about, and I don't like to say, I want to go back to work, we don't go back to work, we don't, all that, that's what it is, it's not about, you need to pay, and then, you know, one thing I've always created and I'm gonna always, and that's, uh, but I will say, yeah, I don't think
They get booked in the hallway. Oh, they, they get booked in the hallway, it sound like they about to bum rush the meeting. It, it don't happen, but it sure sound like it. That would have been epic TV. If the dogs and residents bum rushed tonight, why you sagging us out? How come we can't get up in this bitch? That would have been epic. Truth, you came up and then it disappeared and hurt your back. That was freaky. Good morning.
Good morning.
I, I see you the Zen master over there on your community wall. You just booted.
Yeah, yeah. Lot going on.
I don't know the half of it, I don't know the half.
But the thing, and the question is, you want to come around to this, you like really, you don't like uh, at the first time I ever really questioned, supported this, and like, on the national platform, you see, you didn't know anything about foundations.
Bam! And see Tiffany, and there you go. She just explained to you when she had the red flags, said, took your ass on road and body, and said, I don't know nothing about no foundation, and she remember all the meetings and stuff y'all had where you was promoting the shit out the motherfucking front of them. That, that's why she was like, oh, if she had lied about that, what else she lying about? So that's how you can be part of the process, it first helping, and then change your mind.
Good morning to the
What you gotta say to that?
Tiffany went off.
Hey?
Tiffany went off on who?
The media, the, well, she always is abusing Carmen, yeah, she always abusing Carmen, but yeah, especially Carmen in the media, and she was like, and, and all the trustees, she started being like, y'all n****s in the same building. Why y'all didn't go downstairs and big bingo? Like, could they don't wanna play bingo? Y'all should have went down there in the same building. They said she locked the dogs and residents out, they couldn't get in the meeting last night.
Oh, wow.
She ain't wanna hear the delightful report, questions. Do they, did they have public comment last night, people? That's what I be coming for, I don't care about the business, as she say. Public comment, oh, truth, did, did you, did you get, did it work last night? I sent it again, I emailed it to you, and I, well, you said, I don't know if the text ever went through. I'm tired of you, n***a bitches shit, goddamn. I, I like how the closed captioning put it all in one, as one word. But yeah, I emailed it to you, and I, I texted, I don't know, I think the text was probably still downloading, tried to click it.
You don't do anything, you don't make any decisions.
That is what we coming at the end.
At the first time I ever really questioned, supported this, and like, on the national platform, you see, you didn't know anything about foundations. But you forget that I was in certain roles when certain things happened, and, you know, again, I always try to be tactful, because again, I don't, I don't like on that court, I don't like being, but I don't like, I don't like, um, you know, we're not telling the truth, and the reason I don't report is because you were not honest about that foundation, I was in a room where they started, and then you came to my house after that, running out, like, and tried to say somebody else, right, that foundation that did.
So you came to my house and tried to get me to say somebody else had the foundation that didn't? Oh, you tried to get Carmen to last, you just told it on you, told it on you.
Foundation, I was in a room where they started, and then you came to my house after that, running out, like, and tried to say somebody else, right, that foundation that did.
All right.
And I didn't, again, so you're trying to say, you know, you're not supporting somebody else, I don't support you, again, but I didn't make a decision, you made every decision. You know, and maybe you didn't execute it, but I was there, I was resisting for two years, but you sit up here, you got, you sit up here, one other one, we're attending, but like, and I didn't hide from you, and I'm going to teach you that way, you know, but, you know, you're just here, you're like, I'm not supporting you, you know, you know, it's wrong, but I don't support you, so really not for you, right, I don't support you, but you're not, you're not, you're not
I'm not gonna take this, because I say so much stuff, and it hurts right now, but I'm not going to stay right. And then if that truth will be the truth, then the truth will come, so you really have
Tell me that's the truth.
You know what it is, you know exactly who did what, and I just hate that people throw your lips like this, get up here, act like a whole different person, it's it's hurting, just skeet, act the way you're acting right now, but right now, she don't please you, if you wanna have, like, hold on, hold on, you out of work, if you wanna have a little chat right, that's it, right now, that's how we business, pretend, pretend it is right now, going back to the, is there a motion to this is right, and all the more of them, just on the table, is that
So the motion of the board says, is the motion of the list of bills that are due?
Yes, we did.
The vote was to add the payroll for the motion.
They don't know it.
No, I know. The vote was to add the payroll to the law. What motion said? Correct, to add the
He said, to add, I can go to
To add the vote, add through the
Okay.
What was it asked you?
Okay, so say payroll, I, I just did, and stand, so add payroll. I need a motion to add to, uh, payroll, to, to approve payroll, along with the bills listed on the special agenda. May I have a motion?
Sorry, motion.
All right, um, trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yeah.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Supervisor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passed, uh, also, for the record, uh, trustee Gray Everett, that's six thirty-six, me.
Damn, three grand later, they got that weird, dog.
A motion to approve additional payments on the fund this While y'all pay the bills, I'm paying the bills.
It's just that one bill, a lot of the other ones.
I'm paying the bills, because y'all made this, I made this.
Okay.
I'm paying the bills, just need, hey, it's hurting today, that was, like, the moment, you know, I forgot, I'm just what I'm saying, and I don't wanna make that same meaning in my again, I know, but I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't want to answer, um, also say, it's hard with Julie, because I'm not doing the job, or and you didn't hear from visiting, about getting questions, y'all basically so, okay, moving on.
Hello.
Motion regarding to direct the finance record, I'm just saying to that, I was like, that would be, so next is ordinances. Uh, is there a motion to approve the ordinance that I should travel with that? Motion, is there a second? There a motion and second?
What, what was number three?
That was, yeah, the story, y'all were just, y'all y'all ain't mean stop, y'all might have changed.
That's we all, boy.
It's a motion and a second for trial. Where, where we going for trial? Well, right now?
Put their motion and a second regarding
No.
No.
I told them that
Was read off.
I told you, I read it, so I know, I read it, I just
Gonzalez, he quiet this, he, he spoke his ass, being, being, oh, that
Motion
Dude, man, oh.
All right, so that's, so motion second, all right. Wait, I'm sorry, again, you didn't, you didn't, um, is that wrong?
Right, next question is for James, so that, what is some crisis title? And what's the word for that title?
What?
What's the
You already know the title.
You know, I'm, I'm
How couldn't you just say what his title was? This woman difficult as fuck. You already know the title. Well, could you say it for the public? The public don't know the title. The public may want to know what his title is.
Can you say, what, what did you So as, so you were, little Bible, we were just talking about employee information. I mean, that's kind of sensitive stuff, I mean, if it's not been voted approved to be over general fund, he shouldn't have access to that.
He's over general fund, he
Every time we're talking about general fund, right now, when we
He's calling, he's personally, I was talking
Good point, you said he over the general fund, send our questions to Keith Price about the general fund, and he telling you he ain't been voted approved to be over the general fund, so, uh, I don't trust him with that sensitive information. What you talking about? Well, you keep saying, when we had general fund question, sent it to Keith Price. We ain't voted for this nigga, that's why he just asked you what his title was, and you didn't give one. You know what it is? Good point, Gonzalez, right when I was saying you was being passive, you spoke up, somebody pass him some burritos.
He's on the exact same Keith Freeman, y'all went to Keith Freeman, everything, it's nothing so, that's why, it's a motion, a motion and a second, I'm going to go to a
Trustee Jones? Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Supervisor Henry?
All right, next, a motion to approve the ordinance for the trial. You start, I know, now it's hot, so, so what's the motion? There a motion? Is there a second, sir? A motion and a second, I don't know, any discussions?
It's not like the motion, the, the
Where you going, you, people reading, I'm not reading
I like to, to read.
No, if you read, no, you're not here to read, it's a record, if you read, that's all I want, it's a record.
People disregard that.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, I wanna see. Okay, here we go, so, any discussion, you have a All right, so I have one, so you guys put this in place, did you guys ask anybody about process? All of those on this place, you know, and I got process, see, I had work, um, and, so what is? I ain't gonna lie, I'm talking to y'all, come on, especially, you guys, like, put trial one, what we
You ain't explaining this shit to the public.
Nobody, nobody, I know, just read the phone, the list, to realize, twenty of the work that I'm here for.
Well, again, I, I, I was playing, um, there is really no policy or procedure, I think, um, the problem has been one of the biggest problems that people, um, have complained about, committed to, so, again, our job as board members is to legislate and create rules, um, um, structuring regulations, and there are no trials that were on, or trials, um, so, I'm trying to, uh, don't just ask for it, right, you're right, you're right, you're right. No, you're right, y'all, you're right, you read, you read, so, you guys put this in place, something I didn't have before, so, why didn't you have the input from everybody on the board, I didn't like to track, because believe it or not, I know, I'm bored, I'm I'm really happy, the way everybody looks, um, you saying, but no, nobody knows, I'm for trial, this is what they were on, it's for trial. So, I think you guys should have asked to run it down, uh, with us, and go over, what you wrote, so, if that shit come in, or maybe you want to read it in the next meeting on the twenty, I read the show, I called Jerry the other day, you know, you say, we know for a thing, so, I think we should sit down in minutes before the twenty, and y'all just put that on. So, y'all heard that? Well, I know, and, so, I really want to, just put my stuff on, so, again, we need to put this on now, and or, take a minute, take a minute, on the, on the are you guys, okay? Y'all, y'all, I wanna go check, if anybody wanna go to that, yes. Y'all want to, Jerry, you mean, what's that, okay, all right, whatever, there you go, they have, they have, uh, the trials. I'm not in support of what they got in there, we need to make adjustments, but nobody wants to hear people's objective or people's concerns, so
Trustee Jones? Trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Carlisle?
Yes.
Supervisor Henry?
Right, I'm not against the trials, but I'm not, I wanna make some adjustments to
Motion passed.
Next on the agenda, motion to approve and ordinance, calling you for some, is there a motion? Motion, and a second. So, any motion, second? Our discussion, we're going, why do y'all call them, like, hands? Is it, okay, being, you're not gonna go through, read all the ordinances, in the record, if y'all wanna read them, y'all so wanna see, get the lights, read, in the record, ready?
I'll, I'll, I'll read them.
Ready?
The one township, Cook County, Illinois, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero two. And ordinary pillin' ordinance number twenty-three dash zero four. Type, ordinance regarding the salaries, the severance rate, and a hundred fifty, county township, county county, that's social order, county township, they're getting, supervisor, that's, that's, Kurt's, Joe Jones, I agree, I electrical, county township, police, police, police
She dirty motherf***er, she told him, man, to read this shit, knowing that we gonna take that in minutes.
Section one, incorporation law, all of the recitals, here and before stated, that's the thing, in the
Oh, shit, what it do
Township four does, you're right.
Care, care to fill us in, sir, here, care, care to fill us in, hold on. Care to fill us in, sir.
Incorporate, make the body, that one, that one, section two, person is one, is the, the bill, is number three, and implication, section three, application of the order, is one of the, according to the township, by the constitution, and Illinois, Illinois, five sections. Section four, state followed up, all applicable provisions of the Illinois, five sections, including the Illinois county code, may be amended from time to time, depending on purpose of this order, are hereby incorporated, period, articles, three, heading saving, call, publication effect, okay? Section three, head, heading, articles, sections, paragraph, and code, paragraph, the order, is that called?
This man still read. Dirty motherf***er.
Shoot us, I mean, I, I'd like to ask the question, not about the orders, but we pay an attorney, why can't, why can't he read?
What is this, all right, buddy? I'm like, I got you, I ain't no you mean, all that, people know, who
You ain't
That's my whole, I'm just waiting, you could just summarize, but he's, he's
I disagree.
Any more discussion? Okay, of course, I got a discussion, guys, it, it's funny, because everything's happening, and y'all paying attention to the play, the play, uh, sort of uh, this ordinance, the board of trustees, uh, voted for, approved it, how they had to deal with salaries, for those that didn't understand what he just um, in a career, increase their salaries as well, and no one else about that, so they call itself trying to kill, but this is why I think we should educate the citizens. What has happened, since then, I told trustee Jerry, you know, this, he wanted it, uh, state rep, Daddy Jones, and also, uh, state senator, Napoleon Harris, both created a bill, at the state level, this what happened, they can't control it, y'all, they make bills and all, and I'll say, just for those that don't understand, how, they made a bill, made a bill, just to show, so whether you vote on it, I, you're gonna, the bill trumps the horse, so at no point, I'll put it on, you know, if you don't get, like, gang, it's a shock. If research is the bill number, Illinois has bill four four eight eight, they basically revealed what they're trying to do. So there's no point to vote on They basically revealed what they're trying to do, so there's no point to vote on the show, act like they doing something nice. Because the other, the other two hangers already made a bill, doesn't probably want to see, to repeal the ordinance. So that's right here, for those that don't know what's going on, I know how much we recommend, so here it is. Any more discussion?
Trusty Carlisle? Trusty Gonzalez? Trusty Jones? Two guys again. Motion passed.
Alright, next on the agenda, is there a motion to approve and or justify the policy? Or adequate representation of events, you want to mention, for going on. So, yeah, the motion second, please, motion.
Um, the reason we created this ordinance, because, um, we, we hold a, we hold a lot of activity, all day. I don't feel they represent our township, or they're, they see other towns that represent our township. And we wanna make sure that residents in our township have access to, to be a part of everything that we have. And some people don't wanna travel to counties. You know, I think we should have, um, the events, the more official occasions to begin, um, fostering relationships. Uh, with other, and how they, they work with us, so they go that, all the township residents, um, have a place where they can go home, and we want. And ready to hear, so, um, one thing is not a full representation of township, that's why we bring.
That's sad, um, you guys, you know, I ain't never seen nobody, they only speak at heart. But I'm thinking I'll get a new name, call you Ryan, Carl, I don't know. Although it all is, and it don't say something for certain houses, I'll give undercurrent township, so.
Drop their ring footage of her coming to the house, asking you to laugh about their foundation, drop the ring footage.
As relates to, that's what they gonna tell. We got here to tell us things, for those that don't know, if you do follow us, you know exactly what I'm saying, days in the park, every single seat. And for those that don't allow us to do things, I'm taking the boy out, talking to, talking about it, right? Jerry and Carl, and told y'all, for people that don't allow us, they're sick, y'all know this. Y'all see emails from these people, uh, Daddy John, uh, people send us emails saying, Eddie, come here, John, we wanna rush, we're not telling you bills. These are all documented, all facts, um, some quite that, but no one tell, just, okay, y'all just say so, I gotta say something. Also, um, Fox Point, they tried to do it in Lansing, but I'm back for the state support. I think Angie A. on the list of different places that told us no, so that's not true, on what they tell. They just telling you, so, so, all it up, where else it gonna be, it's a big venue. When I say, uh, my name, Kerry Riley, Kerry, when so many people show up, it's a big style, and so people show up. So you gotta have a big venue, and a big place, where you can have all of the activities for the kids, for adults, the stages. Uh, bleachers for everything, including the ride, so that's the reason why it's a dog thing. Because there's nowhere else that allows, in, you know, seats, or can't have a, or a thing, can't go to things, can't go to posts, can't go to things. We go for the smaller stuff, that's what they tell you, which you do, do, and it's it, they actually send you things like this down, days in the park. And each day in the park, it tells you what city it is, so, again, hold on, that they just say, oh, we wanna do other things, so you make an order of all we want. They don't have, they tell us no, guess what we gonna do, we still provide a way for you residents. We're not gonna knock you in the dick, cause somebody told us, no, I'm a hundred knew about trade along that I know. When I hear no, I find a yes, I do not stop at no, you have to go. Make sure we provide the service, or the resources of residents, that's it, why you think the numbers I.
She steal the money, y'all say no, she just charging them something else.
Cause I keep going, I have not stopped.
She hasn't spent her own personal money on any of this shit.
All the lies, all the hatred, all the makes sense, we keep going, when they didn't vote to pay anybody, pay anything, some people still gave a what? Some people still gave it in their job, no matter what, what you had in your. So I'm just saying, you, you gotta make sense of what is going on, this is how, for the people wanting their money, right? But anyway, uh, if the motion is second, or, or the order.
Trusty Carlisle? Trusty Gonzalez? Trusty Jones?
And next, there a motion to approve the ordinance for a little bit, just in my.
Let's get real, uh, section two, purpose of this ordinance, regulated budgeting. And extended your process for trying to organize by board comp, you contribute profit oversight, approval, and appearance to set management.
So for y'all that don't know, and you sign it, and cause the fake news, what, what y'all don't know, they took the limit to a thousand dollars. Tell me what you have, how, how you about to say that? How, how did you, well, go ahead, don't don't tell me what it's like, I asked you, I asked you what you led it, go ahead. The, the letter's in here, so, go ahead, Ron, what's that?
I would, if, if, um, if it should be more specific, what they provide, it's this.
He said, specific.
Um, the big key organized activities. That is very broad, I would say that's actually. I would actually say that's every, every activity. Uh, so I would, I would just ask, can you be broad, I mean, narrow that down, uh. Much program, I mean, do you entail, it was your intention? Everything that the one township does, say, anything that's organized activity. Our transportation program, our lunch program, a day is not that, that. Was that the purpose, I'm, I just, that's what I'm, I wanna make sure, was that your intention, cause that's how. Uh, no, it says, any organized activity. Or gathering fund, or sponsored by the one township, that's how they described it, that's how I read, read. Cause that, was that your intention, I, I mean, if I read wrong, was that your intention, what you trying to do with? So once you start putting these laws in place, I mean, then you go in and say that, I have to audit it, it's wrong, this is very. If you wanna shut down township, or does shut down all programs. That, I mean, this is. Uh, any trustee can help me with, or the lawyer, nobody can just try and tell me.
We can make it work.
Alright, so are you guys going to adjust in my back on Tuesday with adjustments, or?
Almost, almost.
Alright, is there a second, second, the motion, Carlisle?
Trusty Jones? Trusty Gonzalez? Trusty Carlisle? Two guys again.
Yeah.
You gonna laugh this morning?
I am.
What time?
Setting up right now, what time, how long your, um, thing?
Um, it's another two hours left on here, but I think there's a big pause in there, cause they went to an executive meeting.
I said it for twelve. You wanna get through it?
Nah, I don't, I don't think there's much more, cause like I said, I think there's a, the public comment was at the end. But I, I don't think there's much more, I'm gonna skip to somewhere anyway. Probably do less, I'd rather do like another hour.
Okay, so that's eleven, alright.
Ordinance established guidelines and restrictions for use of retail, credit card, and thirty pounds. To ensure responsible and transparent by management.
We're doing it, we're doing it, we don't want to, we're doing it.
And that rate, and, uh, credit card purchases for day-to-day operations. They want more detail, they want approval prior to purchase, someone.
Um, I think we asked for all those things several times, and, um, we haven't always had information we need. Um, we asked for, uh. So to be, we asked for information prior to something that happened, but a lot of times, the staff is not allowed to give us information, um, frequently. And so it makes it hard for you. And a lot of it's kind of go, um, and how it's up to us, whether we go, if we help others, or sometimes. And always to say, yes, because you don't have that information, so again, we're just trying to create policies and routines, because, and. You know, this is not anyone's personal, but I'm not saying that, you know, this is actually a lot of our, your, your, your. So we have to be mindful of our, of our, and, and I know I have.
What they do, based on our job, no. Each of them do different things, whether it's the, the youth development, youth service, senior service, they teach them something different every time. And guess what they use, a credit card, when she book her events, or, uh, when they took them on a house, I don't know what, what was the, the people? Were they going to a play or something, what was?
Credit, our credit card, you see, I'll be like, for some, so, um, daily senior services for frequent. Uh, for, uh, ongoing events, such as. For our, uh, party events, um, uh, providing, uh. You know, uh, refreshments, or, um, you know, women that's, um, purchasing for a lunch, or. I know how it is, you know. You know, not to have, you know, credit card, and, and. Not to have a credit card, you know, available to purchase something, I know, um, not. And it, uh, it, it will have a factor that on. You know, from your services, there's never been a purchase on a credit card, you know, that we used to see in services. Uh, that did not align to our, our operations, um, providing services.
Uh, there it is. And access. On our ability to access it, and then, okay. My, my service, not to, uh, your expense. And that recurring expense is, that's the way they don't put it down. So you know, uh, uh, anytime the process wish, sometimes if you, you not be up there, which is something that happen. Or standard, entire area, not like they did, go down. It is preferable for our process, that expenses like that. And it are also other emergency expenses. Now, pockets, that's, it can happen, like it is happening right now, that we are filing. You know, uh, uh, you know, uh. We, we filing a malware, malware attack. If we finding off malware attack, we are present, we're wishing, we need the services of this case, services of that. The services of that, it is essentially related to that. Uh, because they, we don't use a credit card, there we have folks, mentality, while, while our tactics. So it makes sense that at least for the expenses that they had, and, and many of those expenses. They play from credit card, when you are recognized. Recruiting expenses.
Shut up.
No, I mean, it, this is, this is, the whole point of this one.
I'm trying to tell him about the loan, Ken.
Okay, well, I think you're checking about the thing, and I think, um, it's hard, I don't think that's right, I think you should be. I'm alarmed, so that, you know, he can charge, well, and when a charge is actually there now, when there's one card, it's a problem. And I don't know why you know, it's a big question, but each of them are responsible, and I'm being targeted from the township, each of them are. So I do think that should be, they ask for the army, was what they need done, and somebody came right here, and was open, but it just was something.
I mean, I'm not opposed to that, I just wanna say, I support the person, caution if you're basically. Cause I asked, wouldn't, I would. We have challenges. I voted in favor, can't. The bills were paid. Respect being what it is. They had their challenges, and pretty much, and the dangers of challenges. I mean, seeing it that way, uh, pretty much, yeah, I owe you. One of the things that I continue to struggle with, and, I need to write this down, yeah, it's getting exciting. I really need to have a understanding of, what are we calling? How we coming out?
I understand, they, they are true, for, for one, a check, and down votes, yeah, but you check, it's my friend. They didn't talk about that, say that's a question, I do, but, they're being, when it relates to, um. Who could pay, the self-hack, the, 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 he wasn't, uh, no, I mean, it's way on check, they pay. So that people do a work, it's not your thing, that's your project, it's a project, it's a project, it's operating. So not everybody wants to eat on their, I don't want to, y'all, you want to do that, that's probably basic.
Uh, on that, on that bills is for performers for, for performers for, for texting. In their contracts, they have certain, they just have people. And who, they want a certain section, they want some sections, they won't arise from the airport. I mean, this is all the contracts that I'm paying for, so those type of questions, yes, we will have to swap. And for, for record, all those IHOP charges was for, uh, senior services.
IHOP was for senior services, IHOP like three dollars for senior citizens. They just use the credit cards for anything, huh?
Right, yeah, so there's certain things, uh, that's just fine, that's the, that's really the purpose of. So they're trying to be good with all.
He'll figure it's not even standing there, y'all, for a fight, whatever, y'all.
I don't know what other way to do it, we got it all, you all. Every time we're doing something, it's, it's really almost forcing, you know, on the leaders by, because now we're discussing. Uh, attention, when everybody, instead of trustees coming in, they wanted like, oh, it's just. As Mr. Masters said. We had to spend fifteen hundred dollars, I don't know what you're gonna do with a credit card. With the limits, you didn't say all the, you know, the fucking part, you shouldn't hear those numbers that y'all have. No, I, it wouldn't be, I spoke to you about asking each one of you all, especially two papered heads.
I just want, I don't know, with all the respect, I still go back to the same question, was to use enough smoke. So many of the challenges were something that was put on a credit card, an aid vote, not a fight. And it's a majority vote after being ten points, it's already on the credit card, so what do you vote?
Well, why would it be a majority vote if you're not feeling credit card, I know, but I'm saying that to say, everybody has credit cards, every government entity has a credit card. Because you all have mercy, their job is not to do for us to say, hey, you know, say, hey, um, you know, we got water breaks. That's not been a job, their job is to get the job done, and us getting the resources to do it, we putting people that's equipped to handle and manage that department. Other than that, you're putting away a department that you can't trust to manage that department.
Earlier, y'all were talking about, oh, good itemized, breaking down. I would just say, a lot of it was one card, I like, like, you know, the ground has a card. And that's the senior services, most of them are scattered card, that's, most of them are becoming, they're cars, they're cars. I, I, I'm talking about people on gear, tracking that, you can see where they are. It makes more sense for each department, they have their own credit card, but all those. Exactly what was spent over, so one credit card, every rocker has to run around everywhere. He has to run around if somebody tried to go grab something, gotta run over Mr. Masters, he's like. It's a leon, my, was quite big, like, uh, so it's saying that.
But I think the benefits, sure, you said, it's not a problem, it's hard to have that here, which while one of the houses in my locker, it's still shut down. One more jam, I'm still having, I, I haven't yet, not enough for you, but. Uh, I'm still trying to understand what happens in the case of a credit card purchase being done. And there's a majority vote to not, it's already been paid, is that not a valid question? Somebody tell me, did he?
I would, I would say, uh, some things can definitely be returned, uh, it's, it's kind of sometimes you go and you get voices to deal. Sometimes those are hard to get here, or to find, yeah, you do sometimes, you do, and you can say no, but you're hard, you're hard. I would say you can say that for a credit card and for checks, you should have the right, you should say no, say we got work, take it. Check to be a bill, but if you have, if you have, you work and, you still want to check, that's the way. So, uh, say, like, they can't see it, they weren't working for me, you know, you can't say no to a credit card, you can't. I guess, you really want to say, I would like to check, like, all the papers, you, you still say no. We are twenty years, five thousand dollars a month, Amazon, that's two years, so we have two or three thousand. We're in trouble, like, I was just gonna say, five thousand, little, banks, talk, maybe two or thousands, I'm really, it's on everybody. So we, we're still trying, that's how we all, yeah, all the supplies, right now, every single market, we had, and that's, uh. Five thousand, very, very, for a personal, for a personal account, it would be personally, for a credit card, or a, that's true.
So we're gonna, everybody, not, not everybody, you have to do some server, don't let it serve for them, and then, I mean, five thousand dollars, and you really. Uh, generally, um, with that being said, any event at this board meeting has changed. We worked through the board to make sure that it's, 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 it is a big, uh. I have a meeting, everybody did, what is it called, compromise and issues.
I mean, um, I, 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 I'm responsible, I would like to have input.
I'll be trying to, trying to do it.
I'm responsible.
Connaughts, right? I, I just wanted to say, I know it was, it was special about certain, you know, as, of the, it was saying, and it got to go.
Yes, it's about structural, and to get it down, normally when, when people, a lot of times, it's twenty, thirty dollars, and then you know, this one person helped. Yeah, you jump around to all of the, I was trusting, he's not, she doesn't stand, I was trusting, he's not, we didn't do it, y'all. Jump to each department, it didn't work, the way the mayor set it up, it was one person, the person was standing, standing, gave us whatever we need. So that they don't feel like people, if they tell, or that, oh, we're razzing up, this is what we told, that he understood. And we went to that one person, and that person gave us whatever we need. So when I say that, you hear it, you're like, oh, I'm trying to stop y'all getting information, it's just one central person that you keep with me. And then I got some, oh, that he got him, working on them, I ain't working, and working every time, because it mostly don't work. But that one person, which we had given me, and then I considered to ask everybody, if it's a question for one trustee, things in every single trustee. Of course, I've, and I have everybody on the same thing, question.
So, let me just say this. In the, in the past, but not too long past, it's always, it, it has been, I shouldn't say always, it's been said on media stations. Media information, probably, it's been said, so, that's something that nowadays is seen with cheap prices. I mean, I, I don't have a particular problem, but I know that Robert D. Information, not to mention the fact that. Robert's not as big as Keith, so I'm not intimidated by Robert, I, I'm sorry, but. I don't, I don't understand that for right about that.
Cause he said he intimidated by Keith, but Keith can run the room.
It has been said, talked about before. I wanna piggyback on something that trustee call out, see, that I think is very, very important. And we're gonna have these discussions, might as well have them now. For, what is your number, probably fifteen years, the bills have been presented in a specific way. Now, we're not gonna change it, so it's twenty twenty-four year, there's a lot of things going on. Like you already said, click pay, you name it all. I'm here to do what best for residents of Orange County. Saying that, we have to acknowledge that there are some times when we press the tank. There are some times where, who knows what information gets sent out when you send it. Through the course of conversation, I discussed with the finance director. I may have discussed with you, but if I did, I apologize. And the fifteen years of the way the bills have been, the warrant list has been presented. So challenging. Case in point. We had a warrant list where we had four hundred and four bills that were on one warrant list. Granted, because we only have one month, one minute a month, that, like, though, but nevertheless, it was four hundred and four bills. It winds up being that, as a trustee, not changing for the other, it's a lot better for me. When I can have Robert, simply, of this, and he did it. And he was still in force, pray.
Oh, I'm trying to save you, let me speak Tiffany.
I, I, I still would like to know, what is a challenge, getting a, a warrant list. Let Amy stop giving it to me, and he stated that, if it done this way for the last.
I, I figured out, for, for the, I haven't eaten. Different format, I guess, credit card, credit card, so, so I, um, I have, I've been eating. My bad. That's sixty-five now, say, uh, what I'm saying, I'm three different ounces, I would say. So, I guess, I, I guess, that's, that's my, what?
One of the challenges, uh, we're supposed to have, everyone.
For you guys, okay, so it stops, and he just told you, you just told you, what, now, what do you just, cause more than. And so, every department is told, are you having a pain? Are you still paying, paying, are you okay with taking it, uh, she's like, all right, is that saying the thing? All right, is there a motion, thank you, thank you, to, to the board? Jones, and this, you say, I'm saying, it's a thing, but, um.
Wait, wait, are we talking about current supervisor hopeful Nate? I, is that what we talking about? Wait, uh, I, I, I tell you.
Is that us? All right, next thing on agenda, is there a motion to reduce the warrant list to regulate the use of. Challenge of individuals for personal promotion by letting in a point of interest, is there a motion? Motion, is that second, is that motion second, any association? Hi, y'all, look, I can't put a gentleman down, that was gotten in the fair, I'm kidding. What is this, we don't know why, why it's on that? Why I'm on the table?
Uh, word on the street is Kamal threw Nate into a wall. Now, I'm trying to verify if this Nate is running for Thornton Town Chief Supervisor. Yeah, Kamal threw Nate into a wall, that actually rhymes, that's funny shit. Not that he tore him into a wall, but that Kamal and wall rhyme. If it's true, hopefully Nate rests charges, and he slide on, I'm, I'm cool with either reaction.
Uh, at the end of the day, our job is to start the town show, it's funny that you got the, like, forces in place. Without reason, uh, at the end of the day, that might get recognition, as long as it's two, for township. You think that is, that is, that is, that is. Everybody showed up, anybody showed up to see the picture on here, see, Chuck, Carla, Josie, oh, my.
Damn, she just said.
So anyway, um, you see other trustees that get to linger, and then you got not care with her. You got all that drift and different stuff, and then go get out, and the fact, so I got plenty of things just to show you that everybody can put. You show up, and you have pictures and stuff, and then we'll put it on, things for, for that. So I just wanna point that out, say anything, and I'm sure. Carla?
Don't sign, fifty result one thirty.
You got put contract on here, is there a motion to approve that the presidential contract was gonna happen? Loan, they, they changed, sorry, your answer. Okay, so on this part, we'll allow the residents that wanna talk about the loan here, um, you can come in while I wonder. See, you don't need to stress the stage, or the loan here.
I'm about to say, I know it can't be that many nates in, in goddamn dead area. I still waiting to confirm that it's him. I just know that Kamau threw Nate into a wall a little bit, a little bit. I don't know what Chief Lacy doing this morning. We know he ain't at the station. But if he is, he ain't got his gun, but he sitting at this, just twiddling his thumbs.
The last worry, um, they voted, they voted, they have an action contract. They want to play contract, they should pay you down, for the start of that, but they did not pay you back. Uh, so it's been basically two months since, uh, vendors have had their, uh, pets. So I am confused in the sense of they'll keep coming back because we didn't pay. And it's sad in my heart because you wanna have fingers, which you bring over there, so they didn't move downstairs, and they were really hurt by.
Nate young, man, Nate, Nate got some niggas that'll slide on, I believe Nate got some niggas that'll slide on, on for them. I'm just saying, this could get messy. If it's true, this could be messy, this could start a war. I'm just playing.
They're not getting their services, uh, for the loan here, um, that they paid, they paid for a township for service, so we clear. It's a portion, yeah, but they still paid for a service. The board voted for, uh, three contractors, and then they said that if the other three came down to thirty-five dollars, they were basically, it cooled them as well. Um, the board wasn't biased that if they did not get contractors when the school goes back, which is middle of August. Said basically, no, we have no one to cut the grass, and that was the purpose for contractors. Again, the board chose not to take no interest. Last meeting, myself, trustee, not named forever, only two that voted to make everybody, uh, so we can, uh, trust me, the president of vows was known to. They voted not to pay anyone, who they, how they know is there, they not show. So just pointing out, residents, residents do pay, uh, if they're sorry, we have to get this contractor to go cut the grass. So then therefore, they did figure out, they then started getting tickets from your business, you have to see what they live in, or they saw Holland, and City Riverdale, whoever gave them tickets. And then bought into the township, now that's what, that's why we gotta pay out, so we not gonna make them pay that, so they sign up for services for township. This is how we get the problem at that, because they show, they're probably trips, and not pay vendors that they voted for to get a contract, you have to pay them. So I just wanna give you some truth and some facts to what's out there and what they're not, so the residents downstairs, um, this is one of them, every big big house. And she just wanted to visit the line here, and so you wanna come in and talk to y'all, so y'all can hear me there.
She had big, big bingo player to come in and speak? This ain't fair.
Which I never talk to the people that have the service, need a pay, so.
Hello, everyone, my name is Belinda Williams, and I've been a resident of South Howard for almost thirty years. I cannot believe that so many people out there trying to crucify Tiffany, and she is so wonderful. I am an accountant, but you never know where life on family walk, because you gotta be careful how you treat somebody in the storm, because the weather changes daily. Here I am, a prominent personal accountant, end up getting cancer, end up having an aneurysm, so found me in an unfamiliar place. Divorced, kids grown, she has a lawn care service, I have a big house, they come by, they cut my grass, that's one thing I don't have to worry about. This cancer medicine I'm taking makes me where I can't walk, but here I found myself unfamiliar in a walker, and I'm walking where I never thought I would be. I'm listening to these people out here, and it saddens me that everybody wanna crucify you, it's like everybody got horns. This lady is so wonderful, I don't see her doing anything wrong, and believe me, if they knew.
Check the, check the PayPal payments to see if this woman name on there, Belinda something, Belinda Matthews, was it? Check the paperwork, she got paid for this speech, she must have hit bingo downstairs.
Something, they'll bring it out, they only have assumptions, but the lawn care service and the food service is something that I need, and she is wonderful.
That's it?
That's all I gotta say.
Miss Belinda, you ain't believe this shit, you laughing shit on your way out.
Hello, hi, my name is Gloria Redd, I'm coming here by the lawn care. I have like medical issues, and you guys, I don't have anybody else that's with me to do lawn care. Lawn care service, they come out, it's like thirty-five dollars a week, through villages by income. So, so security check does not pay for it, thirty-five dollars a day lawn care. Snow people and all this stuff that you have here, and the service will cut, we get the lunch for one fifty. If you take that away, sometimes you get extra bill like they help with the budget. Boom, you're so high, so every little bit helps. So please keep the lawn service of the seniors disabled. Anything else?
Hello, everybody, my name is Ruby Scott. I've been a resident of Gotham for thirty-four years. I wanna say who responsible for our streetlights being on. I called public works, I leave this I attend, I haven't had, uh, streetlights. In one month, almost. I live on a main street, I live on MLK, I even talked to you before about this. We have no streetlight. Okay, but you're getting out to these people, I am on the Zap program. Yes, I went three weeks without a cut. Now, I called, uh, Zap, they did say, okay, you wanna get, then it came out. Finally, I called Stan Brown. And I don't know what he did, but all of a sudden, I did finally get a cut, so I would like to know will I would continue to get a cut?
So that's why you need to go down for all of the time. So right now, we have a discussion, comes a brain, and they're standing.
Okay, thanks.
Four meetings, so now you're saying they go round.
So here, from the left, leading to the right, what is happening is there's a stop cut. And then they're gonna stop cutting, I received, you know, we got. Call the boss, ask him out. I told him. He was wanting to make, they have a way to show it, so this, we're in a situation where we've never been in. County for broken, we here for business. How do I know? That, that is, that's what you're saying, is the question right here, inside of that, we've never been where we are now, and so inside of that, I don't even know how to be ready. But I, every day, we perform a job faithfully, that I do more work than ever imagined. So, so I suggest I not collect because she thinks it will work. Come on, I'm only asking from this point, I would have the expectation that this is, I would know all the details of the rest. I know we only need three on contractors, three, and we, we actually asked for right now, contractors, so. Why is he standing there, that he, he sitting in the business, and or, he did more than thirty-five dollars that we asked for. You know what I'm saying? There was one vendor that did not submit, he didn't put a fee down at all, it's some, I remember, he put it on like forty-five dollars, something, so. So, with that being said, um, granted, and it continues to be the mashup. I, I hope that everybody here has an interest of all of the residents of Wayne County, and I, I really would. And this step for this step, you know, so the fact that they were doing this step, they are, they are, uh, this always our need and opportunity to correct all this stuff. So, with that being said, the contractors. We got them, they, they, it was late in the game when we started eating, so like, and now we're here where we are. That has nothing to do with the fact that they, they twist that, which means that now it's in, um, if they're not cutting grass anymore. Hopefully today is something that's gonna happen where, uh, they are getting paid, they're gonna be slapping more, they'll allow more people to cut grass.
Right, but I just wanna, before you start talking, I just wanna make sure for the board that I just think that you guys should pay everyone. I don't think nobody should get voted on for a contract, and then come to work, and then, uh, one lady, when you hear one more people come up, a month later. Say, I'm not eating, they, this is the way I was, I can't ever stop, I didn't want this for a few minutes, yeah? And one, you gonna get paid in that month come, and then nobody pay. But these two trustees did was wrong, reason why it's wrong, and I'm talking about trustee Carmen, trustee Chris, are not owed, or some they voted for. Prior to come to the meet, they didn't even pay them, they didn't even vote to pay them, said, they didn't vote to pay nothing, and that's why it become this hard. Because when nobody believe in the township, your word is not your bond, if you told somebody gotta come, they are expecting to get paid. They are not expecting to come and be part of the chaos over here in the going now. They expecting us to do what's right, I had the bills, I put it on this list, but when it was time to pay them, a month ago, now it's been two months, two months gone by. Just imagine, you a senior, and you don't get your rest cut, or you a senior, and you on a wheelchair, and you can't get out two cuts of grass, but now you get ticked. That's another word on, on the resident, cause now, who gonna pay that? That's my issue, all I want people to do is do what's right. All I want is us to move forward and not talk about shit, cause it was, that's still, can't crowd it in, it's still done totally. Now, what do we do now? How do we fix it now? That's the now. And fixing now is paying the people their money that it went forever, not putting this together like this and picking out who's okay. When people all did the work, they all got families. What, what if you didn't have way to pay your family, and you know you did the work, you gonna be at that job every day, writing on your check, every day. And that's what they do, and unfortunately, the, the, um, staff get the, get the, they say, burden all that, they get all the social, all the. So like he saying, he now had another work, he now had to jump in and stand, ask him quit, try to quit, what else? So basically, he does stand job and his job, don't pay him for the do, no job, but he jumped in it.
Stan quit, but then he came back, cause he said he was getting calls, and then he quit again.
What I, what I will say is that I apologize, I will not tell anyone else to come here.
It, it's no longer initially, Kamau did throw Nate into a wall, and I'm guessing it's the same Nate, it's to confirm. So it, Thornton Township Supervisor hopeful thrown into a wall by his opponent's boyfriend, damn. This is crazy, crazy work.
Yeah, the expectation is that they need, and I think, and, but it's those people that's at the township, that's asking us to do work. And you're right, I don't, I don't, I don't, so I'm all that, stand around, just, but I give my all, my hundred percent. I, I gave, I felt like, I felt like this. My question was how you know, because. And you're absolutely, but you're absolutely right, I know what you're thinking, going on, because we are in there.
I'm not in your position, I can't make. And, and I, I see low respect, but, um, to provide you with one thing, uh, our decision, I guess, we don't want the administration to say, um, um, because. There have been things that had come up, that have been voted on, and then later it was.
Politicians, gosh, you may get beat up by your rivals, boyfriends, just saying you, but just saying, hey, I'm running for Thornton Township Supervisor.
So, because we understand how you feel, but guess what, we're responding with millions of dollars.
You can't let him throw you into a wall and try to fight you, Nate, you gotta, you gotta slide it, bruh. And then Nate Senior's still alive too, oh, he finna get it, they, they finna slide on, bruh, daddy and son, I'm telling you, watch.
Make sure, we know what's going on is our job, so we don't want you guys to be suffering, that's not our intention, and obviously. But again, we're in a very hot climate right now, just as you, you guys suffer for our decisions, we don't wanna suffer for anybody else's. And that's why we're trying to restore a positive, productive, and healthy way, not just for the residents, for the staff, for us as a board as well. So again, it's not to make anyone suffer, it's very harmless, of, um, ill, ill feelings, it's not that, and so I just wanna be very clear that, uh, I, I understand. I think if people work there, but should get paid, but I think that there has to be a system in place that says, hey, order, this is what's going on, this is the record. You have to be patient. Because again, just as you're responsible to speak to the management and tell them what's going on, we're a contractor. People are more than responsible. This is a very important job that we have. So we have to make sure that we're diligent about just making sure everything is aligned. And that's all we're saying, so. And so I see your perspective, but yeah, I, I think there, there's always more than one.
Because, okay, but look, stop, I just understand people suffering a lot. And like, wow, you're so. Hold on, you don't make a statement, but be truthful and say instructions. Cause you do sit here and allow people to suffer. Cause if you truly cared, you would not done on people like that a month ago. When you sat here and didn't vote to pay nobody. And I, the supervisor, sat there and then owes you, both of y'all, to pay them peace, including Stan. And you sat here and didn't pay them. So stop with the lie. I, I don't want to, I think they should. I think they should, then why did you vote to pay them? You wouldn't even be in this, but hold on. You wouldn't even be in this, but that you would have paid those people that you voted to give a contract to. Y'all voted to give them a contract. So why did y'all, why did you guys, ain't no table when it come up? Hey, look, trustee, ain't no table when it come in, hey, you didn't pay them, okay? Why didn't you vote to pay the people when you voted to give them the contract? When you voted to give anybody a contract, let me, let me add a stat to on this. Their job, yep, that's what you need. You need this last, so when you vote, they're thinking they got a contract. Many guaranteed money, guaranteed work for however long you voted for that contract. So when they go to work, they doing the will of the people, right? Cutting that grass, no matter what. While you at home chilling, while you feel, keeping up chaos, they still cutting grass, so that's the thing, right? Then a month go by, they have a board meeting and we say, hey, um, y'all gonna pay the vendors, they gonna pay everybody. And if you two, you and Chris, sit here and say, no, we didn't pay nobody, not a soul. That's not right. That is not how you run government, that is not how you run your household, let alone A B's. But yet y'all did that. So you talking about you wanna do no harm to the staff, the staff suffered. They, they the ones without a check. They the ones asking and begging to please, can I get paid, when I'm gonna get paid? What y'all gonna do? Man, I ain't come to just work for none. Most people live check to check, but you guys didn't do anything about that. And we begging please, but you guys, you paid everybody, including the ones you voted for a contract for, and you didn't pay them. So now we got this bigger problem with your decision, with this, with your decision, which is, hey, we two months behind. Hey, um, supervisor, we, we still not getting our grass cut. We still got the problem. People getting ticked, causing the township more money, but we gotta pay to keep it because they under our service. But we didn't do the service. That makes no sense. Then we have even more problem. Y'all didn't pay for the food vendors, which was for, uh, senior services. They eat every single week, every week. They depend on our bills, a dollar fifty, two dollars. That's why I mean, y'all don't care, but we had to deal with that. Us, the, 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 the staff, us, do this value. Did you go pick them kids up? Did you figure out, let's go, do whatever they're gonna do? No. Did you know what, what routine that each person do every day? Transportation, how we buy gas? How do we get from A to B? How? When a truck break down? I don't get these complaints, but these are problems we have, but off y'all's decision, cause y'all not paying me. These are everyday vendors, everyday expenses that go with day-to-day operations. But y'all don't, I, I just found out. Oh, just, you don't run day-to-day. Y'all need to ask. That's why I keep saying, y'all, that's the thing, you don't run day-to-day. Ask them their opinion of what they need. What should be charged? And then they sit there pleading with the structure problem, huh? Pleading with you, hey, don't put that in there. Hey, cause you gonna make me a close call, let me have to handle it. Dog, let me get the real proof. I'm saying what I wanna do. That's what you said. You did not give them any opportunity, but you got his name in the horse, a lot that y'all gonna make. But he can't get a safe thought, oh, what in hell if he runs day-to-day? That's what I'm saying, y'all not thinking, y'all can't eat for self. That's how y'all moving, and that's not right. Y'all got to disvalue it. We should not be here arguing about bills that should have been paid on contracts, y'all owe your questions.
But that's your question. So I had a few contractors call me, uh, or vendors, I, I don't know how you say it. They said they could, they don't need to go. Why, you know, it should be, it should be. But then we have people that they, they said, Bill seems to have a problem, they have.
All right, so first of all, let me crystal clear. I don't do nothing with bills, and you know that. So every department has their own bills, and they all kept telling you this, so stop trying to do that, um, cause that makes you look up. So when it comes to a bill, they talk to key partners, right? Key partners, however, it's broken, that you gotta create, y'all next, y'all function, y'all this function, let me say that. So stop just throwing stuff out. They say they talk to, nobody talking to me, nobody. They talk to staff. So when they put it on the list, hold on. When they put it on the list, I don't do invoices, and you know that, partner. Each department does their invoice, and then they all tell you that, and you know that it's wrong from this side. You all putting, you all been putting, they're putting in the system, so how I know whatever bill you have? Y'all just stop. You say no, but they stuff you trying to do. So let's take to what I'm saying. You didn't pay the vendors, are you gonna pay the vendors now? Are you gonna pay the vendors now? So you gonna pay them now? Oh, oh, shit, so why I put it on the list, we still not gonna pay them? This is what the contract, oh, are you gonna do it? Are you gonna pay it? Are you gonna pay? You said no. So let's take.
Yeah, yeah.
On this list, for the grant cut. I'll run for the grant. All the flash. I know why. All right. That's right. That's all right.
She's a big boy.
Jessica Gonzalez?
Yes.
Jessica Jones?
Jones, go.
Supervisor here.
Yes.
Motion, motion passed.
Okay, next on agenda is a discussion of how it will be. Uh, we have a call session for that, so party for that. We're gonna allow, uh, public comment, public comment, we got three minutes. Uh, as public comment, we were gonna call, call the last agenda. So.
Uh, Edna Boston?
You have to go right into America.
My name is Edna Austin. I'm a resident of Pollin. For fifteen years, I've been a resident of Thornton Township for about forty-six years. And I've never seen what I'm seeing now, which is why I come to this now. So I did write some notes here, and I noticed that, uh, well, you know who you are, I don't. That people are holding you responsible in your position, and you're absolutely right. I'm holding you responsible as a resident. Um, I remember all the talk going on about how much Tiffany was making. And actually, I assumed that everyone else on the board was volunteering. Yeah, I did. And then I had to go and research for myself, and I said, wait a minute. Everybody getting a big paycheck, how often do they have to show up? And what are they doing when they get there? I feel, I aim, I feel when you show up at these meetings, I don't care if you had to be involved and still to get the information that you need to make intelligent decisions that will affect this community. Once the amenities are gone, they don't come back. I know this. I lived in Harvey, we had plenty of amenities, they went away. I lived in Dalton, the amenities go away. We had a pool, we had different things going on in Dalton. Okay, when the amenities leave, I, now I'm in South Park. I don't wanna see the amenities of Pop Hallen or Thornton Township go away anymore. Enough is enough. Your kids need to put your toys away, show up at these meetings, prepare to make intelligent, thoughtful decisions. If you're not capable of that, the income that you're receiving from my tax dollars, you don't deserve it. And I, I, I mean that. I'll run for this office because I'm there enough to stand up for it. And if you're not willing to fight for it instead of fighting to get your vision seen, and your vision seen, and, no, but I think it should be this way. I hate them. You don't have to like each other. I understand that politics. You don't have to like each other. But you should be able to come to the table to do what's right for the community and its residents. We're not all Democrat, we're not all Republicans. But for that, you need to be able to come together. And if you're not at a level of intelligence that you can come together at a table and make intelligent decisions, give up your role. Stop fighting. You want the newspapers here, so what? So you get your five minutes of fame? You know, what is the point? I know when Zuparoli was here, I didn't see all of this. And now I'm wondering, is it because he was a white male? Who can help me, somebody get this? Help me understand. I sit here and I see people on the road with me, hecking, and making little snide comments. It's disrespectful. I understand you don't have to like what's being said, I don't like anything I hear, but it's just disrespectful. If you come here with your disrespect in your hand, you should have stayed outside the door. But no, you came here to support your guy. It's like a little band club. I see you meeting together outside hugging and, yeah, we, you know, it's like you decided already, which is not a two. Your mind is not open to receive anything fresh or engaging, so why do you do anything? Your mind is already made up. I thought that we were coming to these things to have something to open up to. Refuse me, I'm sitting here going, I'm trying to understand. And then nobody can tell. But okay, thank you.
Sharon Hudson? Uh, Barbara? I have a last name starts with F. That's me. The string already right there. I'm just saying, you know, my.
I just got three sentences. There's a whole lot of people out in this hallway that have something to say about what's going on in this township. I've been living out here forty-eight years. I've never seen such hair in all in my life. You gotta stop. Been eight months, two days, people, I don't know, it just hurt, or it just.
Work with her.
I don't have the inner circle. I don't know what's going on here. But something needs to give, and needs to stop. All of you. Search your soul and find out what you can do to clear this up, cause the world knows about all this garbage. I'm sick of it. Every night on TV. I mean, I'm just tired of please. Make Thornton Township safe again and have us all be good fellows. And love you. And to this, all.
Sharon Coleman? Is she outside? Cause someone sees her. Sharon Coleman, I'm sure there's a call going over there.
Sharon Coleman.
Sharon Coleman, Sharon, right, Coleman?
Yeah, Sharon Coleman.
Deborah Reeves? The Deborah Reeves? Michael Smith?
Hey, how you doing? How you guys doing? Um, I just have a few things. It's, it's, everybody that sits up there, they said, they're for the people. But it's hard to tell that you guys are for the people because it's things like everything, it's a knick-knack penny rack particularly. Um, y'all mad at her, so we're not gonna pay deals. Tiffany deals, I'm quite sure shouldn't be paid. So by not paying deals, it's not hurting Tiffany, it's hurting who y'all say y'all looking out for, which is the citizens. I'm lost. Um, the senior citizens, they, that the services that y'all are not paying for are for them. It's crazy. Everybody wanna throw out the citizens for sitting at the board, we care, we care, we care. You don't, you strictly do not care. You wake up at four o'clock in the morning and look on Facebook, it's about Tiffany. It's thickens me that people are not sleeping, shitty, or eating, thinking about Tiffany like it's sad. I'll be at work twelve hours. Look on Facebook, Tiffany. At four o'clock in the morning, a post was just made three minutes ago. It's sad that it's so much hate for her, but it's supposed to be so much love for the citizens, but it's rubbing out on the citizens how y'all feel for her, which is crazy. Y'all need to do better. Pancake pass over there, y'all, y'all just not right. Y'all just not doing right. How these bills, that citizens, y'all, y'all can have personal agendas against Tiffany, who cares? It's like, everybody not gonna like them. Some people gonna hate it, some people gonna love it, but at the end of the day, what about the citizens? What we doing? They said, so grass get cut, you know? You know, nothing's gonna happen with that. So it's just like, it's, it's crazy. Y'all need to do better.
Michael Smith?
Michael Smith, I'd like to get in the room. There he goes, a poker back shirt.
One thing I wanna say to this board, if you don't cut your nose off despite your request. You're going to have to face these same ordinances again, whether the supervisor is sitting there or not. But guess what? I'm gonna be sitting here watching, to see you rebuild. I'm gonna be watching, because I know how boards work, how they organize. They do things against one administration, then a new administration come in, we flip it, we change it. Keep the same things you got in place, don't change it, so I'm gonna be here. The other thing I wanna talk about, I put in a FOIA request. Trustees, your communications are FOIable when you sit in board meetings and you text one another. So to Mr. Gonzalez and to Ms. Carlisle, I, I would like my FOIA request answered. If I do not get it answered, within the timeframe, I am going to the Illinois Attorney General's office. Because as board members, you cannot sit in meetings and text one another. You can't do it. Your information becomes FOIable. That is the FOIA law, read. The other thing I wanna talk about is, it's sad how we do our seniors and our youth. I got seniors that live in Riverdale, that talk about their grass being hot, and they did receive tickets. And I encourage them to come to the board meetings and talk to the trustees, cause they voted no to not get your line cut. You took an oath in office, and your oath of office was that you would do right by the Constitution, the state of Illinois, and Thornton Township. If you're not gonna do right, step down. Step down, there's other people that would love to take those seats and provide services for the people. Again, stop with the senseless attacks against the supervisor. Cause guess what? You're not hurting her, you hurting the seniors, you hurting my grandma. That's been living in this township for over eighty-seven years. They can't receive food services that she depend on. She depend on getting her rent paid by Thornton Township. Those are things that you guys gotta think about when you're having your meetings and you wanna cut and hurt. You're hurting people. You're hurting people. When you sit as a legislator, a legislator job is to come and legislate to put things in place in order to help the common goal of the township. The common goal, we got young people committing suicide on a daily basis that can use some services, can use some help, but we cut it. We cut it. I don't see any other trustees with a day in the park in Riverdale. I didn't see any other trustees out there to greet the residents. Whether you like her or not, they voted for you. They voted for you. They deserve to see your face.
Thank you.
They deserve to see your face. So stop with the senseless stuff because it's hurting our township. You can't go nowhere without somebody bringing it up, or in township.
Thank you.
That's a sick name, come on.
Dan, Dan finna get up the doctor.
Jesse, Jesse. I assume most of you know about the criteria, the coal mine syndrome. If you all, anybody read the, uh, by the reports, get everything by the numbers starting from twenty twenty-four. Definitely this million of these members, they came to perfectly.
Thornton Township.
Would you all help, uh, Sam Brown come into our meetings and talk about, talk about, to me? Whatever you wanna talk about. I wanna talk about, I wanna talk about. Excuse me, I can't talk about anything, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt me.
I'll be up there, so.
Thank you. Okay, here's the deal. Our. Okay, here's the deal. Our town, which is part of Thornton Township, has been devastated and decimated by the current administration. And they're bringing that same thing right here to Thornton Township. All you have to do is look at the patterns, a pattern of not responding to, believe it or not, FOIA requests, or requests with illegally taken from, from the clerk and given to our bitcoins, which currently not attorney states ever is against our, our own personal al capone, or even for the justice. I mean, we've been through others, you can tell what the, what the aims are, okay? This is not a reality show. These numbers have affected us deeply. We had a five million dollar, uh, surplus, which is reduced to almost a million dollar deficit, was that a three-year period? I mean, these are numbers that came out of the current administration and which, which more to come. If you wanna talk about FOIAs, and you wanna talk about, uh, open meetings, that, we have thirty-something people out here. Myself, I've been over there for two hours, standing out there for two hours, just waiting to get in, even though the receipts available in here, and that is also FOIA-able. I have several communications from the Attorney General, whom I had talked to when I'm here today. You got a little stuff coming down the road, you coulda known before, whatever you like, but it's coming. Because your violations here and in Dalton, which again, I remind you, is part of Thornton Township, whether you wanna realize it or not. But you cannot continue to not accommodate the people and, uh, follow their civil rights, which is what happens when we have to stand out there for over two hours and can't even get in the room. There are supposed to be some accommodations, open meetings, that again, FOIA has been stripped from us in Dalton, and I imagine the big financial issues here also. And who, who want to recognize two defense attorneys to fill this hall meeting, illegal attorneys, not even associated with Dalton, and make them into private meetings? And private meetings with trustees, no one I time, not our face.
Uh, the first name is Rose? Can't read the last name. The first name is Rose.
Alright, y'all, that's it. We up outta here. We are headed to Truth Herbs channel. Don't meet me there, beat me there, as Tishn was saying. Till the next episode, we up outta here.